Three one, three four four one, three one, three one seven eight, I'm sorry. And in the password series. It's eight oh five.
See if you can hear me.
Yeah.
Okay, looks like everyone is here, so we are at the, uh, meeting. And we just left out with the roll call. But next thing on the.
Everybody.
Next thing on the agenda is the, uh, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the invocation. Ruben, you're. Just even I haven't followed.
Coming, good job.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, dear everybody, thank you for this day, and thank you for this time for our view of the time. Talk about senior business, all the people with the wisdom and the knowledge, take care of your community and immigration.
Okay, we already had the roll call, next on the agenda is the previous meeting. Wait a minute, let me back up, hold on, I'm sorry. Uh, we just came out of the thinking station. And, uh, we have some, we got to vote on these raises. One in particular, so at this time. I guess we need a motion. On Dan's, uh. Anyone hear me?
And they can see us.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can hear you all, uh, Deborah, you're.
Hang, hang on, Dan.
Hold on, we're trying to figure something out.
Okay.
I don't think y'all hear me. Yes.
I hear you.
Sir, sir, yes.
And I've actually got my speaker turned off. So I've got it turned off here and my volume completely.
Everybody in the council, uh, muted, um, so. Except for you, Charles.
You don't hear me?
You're the only one that I can hear.
Dan.
Yeah, they, they have all muted themselves, Charles.
Okay, can you put all of the team leads in the waiting room until we discuss this motion?
All right, let me see if I can figure out how to do that. All right, Charles, I believe I've got all of the team leads in the waiting room.
Okay.
Okay, this is Kendra, hold on just a second. We finally. We were trying, we've got too much interference in here, we can't hear anything because there's too much interference with everybody's phones on.
Okay.
So what we've done is we've silenced everybody's phones, or we're trying to.
All right.
And then I've got my computer that we're gonna be able to, you've got our faces, so you, we're, we're here, and then maybe we can speak through and hear through this one.
All right.
That's what we're trying right now, so that's why we're kinda out of touch for a second.
Okay.
If everybody would just mute their phone, that, that would, you know, that should eliminate their problem.
But didn't.
He didn't.
No. But I can hear you fine now, Kendra. Somebody else like to try and talk, just to test it?
Hello, this is Deborah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Charles, can you hear her?
Yes, I can.
Cindy.
This is Cindy, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
This Ruben can hear me?
Yes. Here. I don't see Shannon.
She's down there somewhere.
I don't have everybody up.
Shall I let the, uh, team leads back into the meeting?
No, 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 we, they, we come in there, they, they've got a, we got some extra, we got to take, uh, uh, actually on your salary, so they need to make a motion and approve the salary. So at this time, I need somebody to make a motion.
Um, this is Kendra Sellers, and we're not prepared to make a motion at this time. Um, we don't feel like we need to make an, take any action until the final budget hearing.
Okay, that works for me. All right, let the, uh, team leads in there.
All right.
I make a motion.
I think they are, and so, next on the agenda is, uh, approve the minutes of the previous meetings, I think we have several.
This is, uh, council member Deborah, I make a motion that we accept the minutes for August the 10th, 2020, August the 11th, 2020, and September the 3rd, 2020.
A second, Kendra Sellers.
Okay, a motion has been made, and second, uh, all in favor, Oliver and Ruben Valas.
Hold on one second, Shannon just brought up a correction that needs to be made. Tenth and eleventh, tenth and eleventh.
Yes.
Um, the correction that needs to be made is Shannon Wadzick was not present. She, she, she does show to be absent on the 10th, but she shows to be present on the 11th, and she was not present.
Okay. Okay, motion is made, and second, with the exception of the, uh, Shannon was absent on the 11th. Any other corrections? If not, uh, I'm gonna continue calling the most, the members, Oliver, Ruben, Valas. Shannon Wadzick.
Yes.
Oliver, Deborah Milton.
Yes.
Oliver, Kendra Sellers.
Yes.
Oliver, Senator. Senator.
Yes.
Okay, are there any further discussions? If not, motion pass. Next on the agenda is, uh, pass the resolution to 2009 dash 14, that's A, approve rate structure for the adverse energy. I guess that's something that's gone on for several years, I guess, that, that's, I guess, got to do with a lot of little cities in this area. Uh, Dan, is there anything else we need to do? I mean.
Oh, uh, no, just to pass the resolution, this is at the advice of the Association of Cities that we belong to, their attorneys, and also our own municipal attorney has signed off on it. So, uh, it's something that we've done each year that I've been here anyway.
Okay. So I guess we need, uh, a motion and a second to, uh, pass the resolution with the adverse energy.
This is Kendra Sellers, I make a motion that we pass resolution 20 dash 09 dash 14 dash A regarding the rate structure for MS Energy.
I second it.
Motion has been made, and second, all in favor, Ruben Valas.
Yeah.
Oliver, Senator Shannon Wadzick.
Yes.
Oliver, Deborah Milton.
Yes.
Oliver, Kendra Sellers.
Yes.
And Oliver, Senator.
Yes.
Are there any further discussions? If not, motion pass. Next on the agenda is the discussion regarding the appointment of Zonin Commission to me and the Artness, 10, 19, 19, according to the Burns Civil Statute of Federal State of Texas, Article 10, 11A through 10, 11H, and the establishment of a Board of Burns to serve a two-year term, council recommendation, upon the by the district. Uh, I know in the past we have not, uh, followed that rule, I mean, we, we've, uh, I mean, I mean, it's, to me, as I'm thinking, people have been on this, uh, committee for at least six years, and, uh, so we already discussed how we was gonna go with that, trying to appoint new members from each, uh, district, and, uh, I guess that's what we're here to, uh, discuss and, uh, appoint. So, uh, I guess with that said, have everybody selected a person in their district?
Yeah, this, we're, we're under the understanding that, um, we were establishing a zoning board, not a Board of Variance.
I thought we were gonna do away with the various, I thought the various board was gonna be the, uh.
Yeah, that's kinda what we decided, in the, in this language, it says the establishment of a Board of Variance to serve it to your term.
Yeah, no, that's, well, what it is, I mean.
I think the chief has a question, maybe?
Yes.
Oh, no? Oh, okay, sorry.
It's my phone, it's my phone, bad service.
Well, we do, we need a committee for the zoning board. And that's what we're supposed to be doing, I mean, we.
Do we need to just correct the language on this, on this, on this agenda? The language on the agenda reads, "The establishment of a Board of Variance to serve a two-year term, council recommendations for appointment by district."
Yeah, you're right, but that should be a correction made, that's, actually should be a committed member of the zoning board, not the variant board, because the council is gonna be the, uh, well, I understand it, is the the zoning board. I mean, the zoning board, very.
Just need to mark out the establishment of a Board of Variance. Sort of a two-year term.
Well, I just, we'll leave that as a two-year term.
Yeah, how long you just mark out the establishment?
We, we really, I mean, we've been avoiding this so long that we need to really.
We understand that, we're just trying to make sure that we do what's, what's correct, according to what the agenda says. The agenda reads, "Establishment of Board of Variance," we aren't here to establish a zoning board.
If I may, the agenda item is a discussion only item, so these are matters that are up for discussion, you don't, doesn't mean you have to act in any way at all.
Okay, okay, I guess, uh, let's, we can, at this time, we can still discuss, have anybody made any decision on who they would like to be on the zoning board in their district?
Yes, this is Kendra Sellers, and I recommend in my district, Jesse Davila.
Who is that?
Jesse Davila.
And Councilman Deborah, I am recommending Scarlett Terrell.
Who is it, Charlotte Terrell?
Garlet, with a C, with an S C, Terrell, T E R R E L.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
This is, she's not in my district, but the other four council members were okay with me naming her.
This is Shannon Wadzick, and my recommendation is, uh, Claudette Ringo.
I didn't hear that Shannon, please.
Claudette Ringo.
Okay.
This is, uh, Councilman Ruben, I have put down the one of Houston.
So we got left, uh, Cindy.
Well, is he announcing, is he giving one to? Okay, well, I'm gonna say Lee Lerman.
Who?
Lee Lerman.
Okay. And I got it, I got it, Charles, and I'm gonna say Justin Kent Trail.
Cantwell.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, nobody's came back, trying to give him some cards, I'll give him his cards, though.
Okay, it looks like a, a good selection, I mean, I think it looks like it's really got some different groups in there, that's good, that's what we want. We'd like to have somebody really with challenge, and somebody who would stand up and, uh, and, uh, make a decision, because there's gonna be some tough choices. And, uh, we need somebody that's willing to make the decision what's right for the city, regardless of, I'm sorry, a lot of people's feelings, so. Anyway, uh, uh, I'm sure everybody can, I haven't talked to Justin, I had talked to him early on, and he always said he would do whatever the city media would do, so.
We're, we're discussing as, uh, amongst ourselves that we, we believe that, that this should have, we'd agreed on at earlier time that it was a seven-member council. And, um, if that's the case, if we can, can all agree with that, then I recommend that we add Rick Dollahan to that list.
Thank you. Hi. I heard, so, you're, I agree. Okay, uh, so with that said, why don't we, uh, to make this official, uh, just, let's, uh, go ahead and vote on this, and, uh, agree to these six, seven names that we have identified today, uh, and I do need a motion to, you don't have to call out the name, just make the motion of, you know, the, these members, the names that we identified today, and then, and second.
I make a, this is Kendra Sellers, I make a motion that we appoint the seven members that we've already mentioned to the zoning board for a two-year term.
This is Ruben, I second it.
Okay, motion has been made, and second, for the seven participants for the zoning board, all in favor, Oliver, Ruben, Valas.
Yeah.
Oliver, Shannon Wadzick.
Yes.
Oliver, Deborah Milton.
Yes.
Oliver, Kendra Sellers.
Yes.
Oliver, Senator.
Yes.
Motion has been made, and second, and if there are not any further discussions, motion pass.
We would, we do wanna clarify that we would like to see these folks, uh, sworn in by the next meeting, or at the next meeting, or whatever.
Yeah, that needs to happen, you know, we had been doing it in the past, so we will, uh, I guess, expect these, uh, member to, uh, contact their representative and let them know that they would need to be there to get sworn in and, and, uh, discuss their, uh, our expectation of them. Okay. Next on the agenda is pass the resolution 2008 oh 10 dash B, funding for veterinary expense.
That's what we failed to, yes, that was in my school, it's a, we could.
I do.
Yeah.
I make a mo, this is Kendra Sellers, I make a motion that we pass the resolution 20 dash 08 dash 10 dash B, funding for the veterinary expense.
I second it.
Cindy Durn seconds.
Okay, motion has been made, and second, uh, Kendra and Senator. Uh, all in favor, Oliver, Ruben, Valas.
Yeah.
Oliver, Shannon Wadzick.
Yes.
Oliver, Deborah Milton.
Yes.
Oliver, Kendra Sellers.
Yes.
Oliver, Senator.
Yes.
So all, they're, as in favor, if there are no further discussion, motion pass. Next, the resolution to add Chief Vasquez to the City of Secrets Police Department checking account, three one zero zero seven four three two. So we just need to focus, sorry, we just need to make it official. I need a motion and a second.
And if it's made public? So why do you put a checking number? Dan?
Dan?
Yes.
Why is the checking account number posted on the agenda? Wouldn't it be just better just put checking accounts than putting a number out?
I really don't know, Alderman, the checking account number is on all the checks.
I know, I understand, but why would they, why would you put the number instead of just?
Well, for clarification, that this is only the one account, the police department account. This account is the account that forfeitures, fines, things like that go into, and it's
all that.
Supposed to be at the discretion of the police how they spend it, so.
I know, Dan, I just said because you put the number out, that's fine, I mean, I just said, why would the number posted on the agenda?
So we'd be clear what account we're talking about.
The public had, the public would know what number checking that.
Well, you know, honestly, Alderman, uh, this is a requirement not of me, but of the bank. And they're not going to open the account until they have minutes that clearly say that the entire city council is aware, and that they want the chief to be able to sign on this specific account. So I want it to be as specific as possible. For more clarification, I'll reach out to the bank and ask them for their reasoning behind requiring this, and get back to you.
Okay.
Kendra Sellers, I make a motion that we add Chief Vasquez to the City of Secrets Police Department checking account.
Deborah, Alderman, Milton, second it.
Motion has been made, and second, so all in favor, Ruben Valas.
Yes.
Oliver, Shannon Wadzick.
Yes.
Oliver, Deborah Milton.
Yes.
Oliver, Kendra Sellers.
Yes.
Oliver, Senator.
Yes.
If there are not any further discussion, motion pass. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, from the three departments, the Cubs work, the Minister Court, and Administration, Police Department.
I have a question for Renee.
Go ahead.
Renee, this is Deborah, and I know we can't discuss it, but can you fill me in on a little bit about the house, the two-story house that's across from the community building? I mean, is she just paying taxes on that, there's nothing we can ever do to help her out, where she can do something with that house?
Renee, can you hear, did you hear Deborah's question? We can't hear you, Renee.
I don't even see her.
I see her, but I can't hear.
No, I just thought, because I think she couldn't.
Can we unmute her? You're muted, Renee.
Charles, I mean, Dan, can you unmute her?
No, I'm afraid I can't.
There we go.
She can hear us.
Oh, yeah, she is walking away.
Renee, you need to unmute yourself.
She is unmuted.
Now, rate, rate the volume.
Yeah, she's, she's unmuted now, Alderman.
Renee, look. Renee, look.
This is a.
She's seeing it, but she can't, she's trying to fix it.
Renee, Renee, can you hear us?
Now she's muted.
Muted.
And what?
I guess we're gonna have to skip this with Renee because she can't hear her.
Let me call and see if I can talk to her.
Oh, she can hear us.
It's, it's not an agenda, Adam. It's okay. I'll talk to her personally.
Deborah said she just talked to Renee personally. Okay, Shannon has a question.
And this is for Dan. And on the City of Segre's webpage, it's looking really good, first of all. And Brad is doing a great job. We have been working together, whatever it's doing, it looks good. But I went through rabbit hole after rabbit hole trying to find the City of Segre's phone number. You know, once we get the phone number, then you have to go through a whole other chain of events to get to speak to someone. But the phone number I could not find anywhere on the website that Brad's been working on. I talked to Brad. He said that he felt like he needed to talk to you, Dan, since y'all have already been doing everything together. But I would like to see that put on the website. And he said that he's got some ideals that he would like to see it easier for the older generation. Like, just if they, if they want to go look at what's on the senior citizens, that, you know, that there's a place on there, you know, even though that's a county-funded thing, it's still something for our City of Segre's people. And he said that, you know, he would just feel better since he has already started contacting all, you know, doing all of this with you. If, you know, if it was discussed with the meeting, if we might, you know, maybe see about getting the city page, you know, even though it's already user-friendly, a little bit more easy-friendly. So if that, you know, just something, you know, things that that's going on in the community with the senior citizens. And I mean, that's a simple phone call that Brad told me that he wouldn't mind making to the senior citizens and speak to, I can't think of the lady's name, but Shirley and them and get the media put on there or something, you know, or when they're doing their flu shots down there. But, but the phone number, I do feel like that, because if you go to the contact page, it just has the email information. There's not the phone number. And then, like I said, then once you get the phone number, then you have to listen to the automated thing and then figure out who you need to talk to. And I did notice that the police department and Renee's was on there, but the city hall was not on there that I could find.
All right.
Please.
Sure.
Any more questions by the team leads?
I do. On the request for qualifications, it says we have, or have been submitted to the city's seven architectural firms. Election committee has begun to process the interview and file the selection. Now, who is the, who is the selection committee?
That is Mayor Evans, Justin Cantwell, Rick Dollahan, and Lee Lurma.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And you may go ahead and add, you know, we have made our selection of the top three and we want to personally interview those because it's so close. Everybody's opinion is pretty close. I mean, pick the top three. So actually, we want to meet with them in person and interview. I don't know whether that's going to happen.
Do I need to tell what I know? Charles?
Yeah.
Okay. I got a call the other day from a man that I've known since he was a little boy. And he was telling me that his wife, she's an architect, and his wife owns S K Architecture or whatever. She is one that they have narrowed down. And I've known them all their life, so, or him and his wife for many years. He just wanted me to know that since I was a little girl.
Well, that comes, it was one of the top three, so. She probably, I mean, you know, you know, and to be personally interview them, you know, I can make a final decision because they're real close. And they all are in love and that's good, so. And she looks, I mean, that country looks real interesting. But, you know, what that, what that is, is, you know, any work that the city gonna do in the future, you know, those three choice people would be qualified to do, which I want to choose. I guess first project we got coming up is the, the animal facility.
First project, animal control. The first project that will need them of the animal. Well, that's economic development.
I have a question for Rick. See, how's the evidence room going?
The, the evidence room is, I guess, scheduled for October is another round of stuff's gonna be done with it with October and stuff. The evidence room, I guess, best way to just discuss what's going on is, it's, it's gonna be an ongoing thing. And as far as, you know, we've put more evidence in since the last time that I have destroyed some that has come in from some of the cases that we're working. So it's, it's gonna be a work in progress, so, but it's gonna be taking evidence and putting it in and over time, we'll be taking evidence out and destroying it or getting rid of it. So that's, that's what's going on with the evidence room.
Okay, another question I have. What about, you know, the officers, I mean, with this virus going on, are you, are you guys still patrolling? Giving tickets or just? What's going on with it?
I think the tickets are, are on the, on the list. I guess we wrote some seventy-some odd tickets, I think, or something like that. It's on the paperwork. We're still issuing citations. We've made several here recently in the last two to three weeks. We have arrested several individuals with outstanding warrants in Gaines County. Some of it was last night, in the middle of the night. We had an individual that was wanted in connection with a homicide and had five felony warrants. And he was caught last night with our department and Gaines County Sheriff's Office. This morning, we also served a warrant with one of our residents who had two outstanding felony third-degree warrants out for their arrest. We took them in this, this afternoon. I did, actually, personally myself. So we're, we're, we're trying to clean the streets up and people who are, have outstanding warrants, we're getting that done. And, and also, I've got the new cameras that was directed by the city council to get in place. That's bought in place and up and running. And the guys and gals in the police department love it. They, they say thank you and, and we're, we're doing good with that. Also, the pickups, I've selected three pickups to show Cindy here in the near future. One black pickup and two white pickups as far as to get LaDora's new vehicle ordered and let's get that here. And I'm gonna talk with the, the guy, I guess, Brandon, can't think of his last name right offhand for the, for the, the car ports and stuff like that. So a lot going on in the police department and a lot of, a lot of activity going on right now as we enter the new fiscal year, Mayor.
Good job. Thank you.
So I had a new officer lacking here. What is it? Trevino?
Officer Trevino is, is liking his new position here as a police officer. He said he's very happy and content. I just got through interviewing some of the other officers. I'm going through. What I told them I would do when I first started here is evaluating the police department over the next four to six months, including the personnel. And I've sat down and spoke with several of them. I still have a few more to go through. Doing a, well, basically just a touch base with them and, and doing, I guess, for lack of a better term, an evaluation with them and then with me. And again, everything, everybody so far is happy that I've, that I've evaluated and I'm happy with their performance as well for, for now.
Okay, very good.
Has a question. I don't know if we lost Renee completely, but my question kind of follows up with what Deborah's question was as far as like what are we doing as far as trying to get some of these other old houses and buildings and stuff? I'm gonna go ahead and use an example of the hotel on the highway and the old Segre's Music Hotel. That is an eyesore. Is there been any notes written? I mean, I see some tags on some different houses. Has any of those buildings over in that area been tagged or anything? I don't know if you can hear me, Renee. Okay, we still can't hear you.
What, did you have some houses in particular you were talking about, Shannon?
Well, I seen like where Manuel Davila used to live on Avenue J, there's some tags on it that I know that that's been like marked off that nobody should go around or whatever. But what I've seen about as well is some other houses that were vacant and abandoned, but like as far as like the, what was that called? The Segre's Motel, the. Out there by. Yes, out there by Courtney Country.
I'm, I'm, Manuel's house, I think, all of those houses have been marked for demolition. I think they still had, they gave them so much time, some of them as long as a year to do something with them or they were gonna tear them down. So I, I'm pretty sure that's what it is. Some of them may be shorter. If they say, okay, we're not gonna absolutely do anything, go ahead and tear them down. But I think Manuel's house is one of the houses. They gave them a year to make a decision if they, what they want to do with it.
Okay, I'll just talk, I'll leave that Deborah and I'll talk to Renee whenever we can hear her.
Kevin may be able to answer that question. Kendra.
And I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for this evening.
I second it. This is Deborah.
Motion has been made and second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, Alderman Ruben Dallas.
Yes.
Alderman Shannon Watzek.
Yes.
Alderman Deborah Milton.
Yes.
Alderman Kendra Sellers.
Yes.
Alderman Senator.
Yes.
Are, if there are not any further discussions, motion passed. Next on the agenda is the public comments. Are there, I don't think anyone is logged on. I haven't seen them, uh.
No one else.
Okay, are there not items that we need to be notified or talked about, but we can take an action on?
Uh, Charles? No, just a reminder that this weekend, we're having, the chambers having a car show and corner tournament. So I was gonna visit with Renee tomorrow, kind of see where we're gonna mark off our cones and stuff like that. So it's just a small event that we're having this weekend, homecoming weekend. Just a reminder.
Good.
And also, we're meeting Friday morning at seven thirty?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. We need to do that because that's, because I guess they're just gonna post it on Sunday and it at least have to be five days. And they'll, she wants to do it as early as we can. They have a process what she needs to do. So at seven thirty, so we all just need to log into, Dan, we'll send everybody out a reminder on Thursday that they need to wake up early. Anyway, that's good. I'm glad you brought that up. Anything else? If not, we can set the date and time of the next meeting. Where is it? I don't have a calendar in front of me.
I'm not sure that this is necessary, but just in case, could somebody make a motion to reset the regular sessions beginning time? I know you're wanting to move it to seven. And if we can just have a motion to change the beginning time of the meetings and we'll begin with this next regular session at seven P M, if that's what you want to do.
I think we've decided six thirty, but this is Kendra Sellers and I make a motion that we reset our meeting, regular meeting start times at six thirty.
And I'll second it.
Okay, most, motion has been made and second to start a regular meeting at six thirty. All in favor, Ruben Dallas. Alderman Shannon Watzek.
Yes.
Deborah Milton.
Yes.
Kendra Sellers.
Yes.
Senator.
Yes.
Motion passed. So in the future, all meetings will start at six thirty P M. If there's not anything else, I guess we can add a motion to.
If, if we will set that next meeting date as well as the time, that would be October twelfth, six thirty P M.
What, Deborah?
It's Columbus Day. Is that a day off?
That's Columbus Day, is that for the city?
So would you like to make that the thirteenth then?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
It'll be recorded that the next meeting will be scheduled for October the thirteenth at six thirty P M.
And I would like to propose that we do everything possible to have it at the community building with six-foot distancing, and I promise we can get that done. But we had so much trouble tonight. I know if everybody, if you're, you know, if we're all nervous or whatever, wear your face covering or whatever you need to, but to me, these meetings are not going well.
I agree with Deborah. I think we all agree with that.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
This is Herman, I second it.
Motion has been made and seconded adjourned, immediately adjourned.